Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for September the 21st. The first item on our agenda today is a here presentation regarding the Solar Parasol Project at the Mesa Art Center. Cindy, good to have you here. Gentlemen, we're looking forward to hearing more about this.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. My name's Scott Luchey. I'm the Director of Environmental Management Sustainability. I'm here today with Cindy Ornstein, the Arts and Cultural Director, and Tony Kadorin with our Energy Resources Department. We're here today to talk to you about a proposed solar parasol project at the Mesa Art Center. As you can see from the rendering here, this would be in the south parking lot of the Mesa Art Center, and it's not a standard carport installation that we're proposing here at the Art Center. This would be a 24-foot-high structure that would cover not only the parking spaces but also the drive aisles in between the parking spaces within the parking lot, and covers about half of the parking lot for the south parking lot for the Mesa Art Center. The reason why we have the three departments up here today, we've been working collaboratively on this project, is because I think we think it meets goals of all three departments, and so we'll go into a little bit of detail. Tony and Cindy will go into detail in regards to how this helps their departments.
Okay, so this project is going to be 512 kilowatts of solar panels that will be producing clean renewable energy that will be fed directly into the electric utilities grid, reducing our carbon footprint. It'll produce the energy equivalent of about 30% of the max annual energy usage and about half a percent of the total electric utilities' electric consumption.
So we're really excited not only about the renewability of the energy that would be produced, but the place-making implications of this structure. We feel it makes a statement and has a presence that's important, but it also has very specific operational benefits in the form of creating shaded parking for over 100 cars in the lot, which is a valued amenity for visitors. It will be used as, it will create a new event space, in a sense, it creates a larger programmatic event footprint for Mesa Art Center and the community because it could be used for community festivals as well as for Mesa Art Center events. And it is a great connection to First Avenue. As First Avenue grows and develops, there's, this creates much more of a presence on First Avenue and connects aesthetically to whatever happens with the streetscape improvements. We did present the concept to both the Museum and Cultural Advisory Board and to a select number of key stakeholders and the officers of Mesa Art Center Foundation Board, and everyone was unanimously enthusiastic and supportive of the benefits of this from all perspectives.
And how it fits in with environmental management sustainability. We have a renewable energy program within the department that we're working with other city departments, and also an energy conservation program. This is a little bit different from other projects that we have done as far as solar projects because it is in our own electric utility, and because it is that superstructure, it's different in that we don't have some of those savings associated with the other projects that we had as day-one savings, but that's, that's because we're really would be, you know, this is a energy that is not displacing retail energy from SRP that we're purchasing. This is energy that would go directly into our electric grid and be sold out then to customers also. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Tony. You can talk about the supply portfolio and how's that, how that fits in.
Sure. So we just wanted to provide a little bit of background about how we purchase energy supplies for our electric utility customers. We use a planning process known as Integrated Resource Planning, which is a standard electric utility planning process, where we try and take into account the metrics shown on screen to evaluate all types of energy on an equal basis, so renewable energy and conventional energy. And using that, we issue competitive RFPs, which seek to maximize competition. We actively seek out trading counterparties and always try and trade on the most active energy markets to keep costs low for our customers. And that results in the supply portfolio you see before you. The majority of our energy comes from five different three-to-five-year contracts with energy marketers, and Exelon and Shell Energy have won the majority of those contracts. And then about 20% of our energy actually comes from renewable energy sources, mostly from the Colorado River hydroelectric power, but also from our customer-owned photovoltaic power. The rest of our power is purchased on our behalf by the Western Area Power Administration on the open market, and this, this project would offset that energy. So the yellow slices of the pie that you see up there, this project would go to shrink those and displace those.
This is a view from the southwest of the, of the concept. Obviously, the details would be designed in the design phase of the project if it moves forward. One of the things I love about this slide is that it really communicates how, how this would create a sense of place as you approach the south side of the Art Center. Right now, there's a large open parking space. It's not terribly attractive, and it doesn't give you a sense of arriving at a special and important place, and I think this really affects the, the impression on approach and arrival, but it also will add an aesthetic element that complements nicely some of the other developments on and near First Avenue, the look of Encore Art Space, the new, the courthouse, and I think that creates an aesthetic environment that will be inviting for future people considering development along First Avenue. This is a close-up that shows a couple of items that are obviously, again, simply conceptual, but in this image, we show it in a metallic paint. The paint color can be determined in design phase, but that does match the, right now is designed to sort of match the metal shingles on many of the buildings at the Art Center. The double columns that are where the inverters for the solar energy are placed provide an opportunity, there are four of them, they provide an opportunity for mesh banners that can have signage welcoming people to the center, changing potentially each season with some messaging about programs or directions. The, there's the opportunity to mount digital signage on the two columns by the entrance. That is not part of this proposal. It would be an add-on, and we would have the opportunity to add that on in a future phase if we don't have the, the resources to do it right at the outset. There are some openings that create dappled light under the environment. I think it's worth mentioning that there is a desire for us that we're still pricing out to add a colored surface to the parking lot and get rid of the islands to create more of an event plaza look so that it looks beautiful all the time. And probably one of the most exciting things is that this framework can be used to provide features for event logistics. So the, the east end of the framework of this grid, of this structure would contain a grid, a metal grid, able to be used for hanging theatrical lighting. That means that we could put a big stage at the open end at the east end without having to rent a trust to hang lighting on, which is an extremely expensive rental, about half the cost of a special installation of a big stage for a big concert, and this would be permanently installed and available whenever we wanted to do that. It also could be used to hang lighting that, that focuses the other direction for a smaller stage underneath the canopy during an event. The parking lot lights would be created as dimmable and colored so that we could use them to add, create an event environment, and there would be extra utilities placed throughout the grid so that we could service various things that might be needed for events with electric.
And so we're proposing to use what's called a power purchase agreement for the delivery of this project. A power purchase agreement, what we had done is we, we went out and we did an RFQ process to get qualified solar vendors under contract to do this type of work, and then we bid this project specifically with those qualified contractors. Amoresco was the one who came back with the winning proposal for this project, and so with a power purchase agreement, what they would do is they would design, construct, own, and operate the structure, and the city of Mesa would pay for the kilowatt-hours that are produced from the solar panels. And so if the solar panels don't produce energy, the city does not pay Amoresco. What we, what we commit to is actually paying for all of the kilowatt-hours that are produced from the structure. And so what we would do, what we're proposing is that it would be a 0% escalator, so it's a fixed price over a 25-year period, so it gives some budget certainty also in regards to the power purchases that you're going to have. This is very similar to the projects we have done in the SRP area, where we've done them at Fiesta PD, Red Mountain Library, Red Mountain Multi-Gen, to name a few of those. This is, we used a power purchase contract with that. It was with a different solar vendor, but similar concepts as to what we would be doing here at the Mesa Art Center. The construction timeline is estimated to be two to three months, so we would be looking at going out with approval from council, entering into the final negotiations with Amoresco on approval of that PPA, and coming back here. A little bit on the funding.
Excuse me, Scott, before we move on, I think Mr. Thompson has a question for you.
Scott, so what is, what you're saying is that there's zero cost to the city, so Amoresco's gonna finance it, fund it, build it, construct it, design it, maintain and operate it? All we're doing is just strictly buying the power, so there's no upfront cost to the city at all? We're just strictly buying the power that the solar panels are producing?
Yes, well, there's a yes and possibly a no. The only portion that may be paid for upfront is some of the things that Cindy was describing in regards to some of the event fixture stuff.
Right, just the, the special amenities that we want.
Exactly, but as far as the, the design, construction, operation, maintenance of the solar structure, that would all be on Amoresco, and the city would not have any of that upfront cost for the solar. It would only have the ongoing costs associated with purchasing the energy that is fed into the electric grid.
So would the city eventually own after a certain period of time? Is it like a lease-to-own type thing, so we'll pay for the energy over a certain period of time and then we'll own the structure?
Yes, there's, there's potential for buyouts throughout the contract. It's a 25-year term, and then at the end of that 25-year term, we can either purchase it at fair market value at that 25-year, or Amoresco would be required to put the site back to its original condition.
And I just want to add to that, that there'll be a small upfront cost on the electric utility side to actually interconnect the solar panels to our system, so there is that. Just wanted to be clear on that.
Mr. Whitaker.
So I'm assuming this is a contractual obligation to purchase the electricity for a certain set amount of time, then?
That is correct.
And what is the cost that, what's the agreed cost that we're purchasing the electricity for per kilowatt-hour versus the cost of electricity that we typically purchase from any of the other certain?
Why don't we keep, why don't we finish, if we could finish? I think we covered all those questions here in just a second.
Perfect.
I think we'll get right into, so that, that really kind of gets into the next one. I'll turn it over to Tony, and he'll talk in detail about that.
Sure. So like Scott mentioned, we'll be paying Amoresco for every kilowatt-hour that comes out of that project. This comes out to an estimated $128,000 a year. If the system produces more on a sunny year, we pay more. If it's a cloudy year, we pay less. So whatever that system produces, we're paying for. Now, if Mesa were to purchase this energy from an equivalent amount of rooftop-owned solar generation, we'd pay about $76,000 a year. So there is a cost difference there, but that cost is approximately equal to about half of that 28,000, $128,000. So what we're proposing is to split the $128,000, where $64,000 is covered by all our electric utility customers as if we were adding an equivalent amount of rooftop solar. The other half, the other $64,000, will be covered by just the city facilities within the electric service territory. So what that works out to is about 13 cents per month for the average residential customer, and about $27 per month for the average city customer, and that varies on the size of the facility and how much electricity each customer consumes.
Mayor, Council, the way we, we had to look at this so many different ways to see if this was something we wanted to do, so we looked at it both from the idea that we would have a locally sourced green energy source that, you know, if, to have that, you're gonna pay a premium. If you want SRP and you want to buy specifically their wind, I think, portfolio, you pay a premium for that. Yet at the same time, we recognize we're building a structure that's gonna provide a significant amenity for the arts, for the Mesa Art Center, as well as for our community in general. So what you're just gonna see here is we've tried to figure out a reasonable way to allocate that cost between rate payers that actually pay, they're in the electric utility, and then also generally for the whole city across the entire city of Mesa by imposing or creating a higher rate that is paid for by city municipal users, maybe I suppose by saying it, then obviously has an impact over the whole general fund, and then obviously allocating some of the cost directly to the Mesa Art Center that comes from their funds that are derived from the revenues that they receive from their activities. So we tried to figure out a balanced approach to recognize, so it didn't all get loaded onto the rate payers in the electric utility, nor did we just try to load it all onto Mesa Art Center's enterprise by itself. We tried to, we kind of acknowledged that there were benefits to the three groups, the specific rate payers inside the Mesa Electric Utility, all citizens of Mesa, and then specifically to the Mesa Art Center, and the revenues that it will be able to generate with additional activities because of this additional venue. So that's kind of the big picture, maybe, philosophy, is that fair?
And maybe we can do this last slide on cost, just to round out the, the story, which is that the Art Center itself would absorb the extra costs related to the amenities that I mentioned, the lighting grid, the dimmable lighting fixtures with the colored, colored lamps, the extra utility outlets. So those costs, which are a bit over $300,000 if they were paid for upfront, come to a $12,000 a year annual cost to the Art Center. We will see if we can't get, potentially find a donor to pay for part of that upfront to reduce the annual cost, but the fact is that we can absorb that $12,000 annual cost. It actually would be offset if we were doing one rental of one giant trust for, for an outdoor stage that would almost cover that amount. So it is, it is well, well worth it to create that amenity for the community and for the patrons visiting the center, as well as creating the sense of enhanced place for us to spend that $12,000.
Mr. Thompson.
Chris, can you, what would the average cost per electric customer and average cost per utility customer, how much would that increase across the board?
For the average electric, Mesa electric user? Can you have that? Yeah, so for like a residential customer, we're looking at about 13 cents per month. For an average business in Mesa, $3.35 per month, and then for a city customer, so city buildings, $29, about $30 per month.
So, so 13, it's a total of 13 cents or 13 cents per like kilowatt-hour?
Total, total bill increase, yeah.
So we're just trying to imagine that, you know, by, there's a lot of initiatives out there that suggest that we need to get to a higher portfolio, or higher portion of our portfolio needs to be sustainable. Energy, and this is a locally sourced energy, it's a very small fraction, but it's obviously, and it also has, is much significantly higher than the other sources that we have access to, but it definitely is cleaner, it's locally sourced, and so we saw this as an opportunity to kind of hit a lot of objectives in, in a modest way without trying, at the same time trying to be very sensitive to how that cost burden, where it was allocated, and how much. You know, we can obviously move some of those around, council wants us to, we just, this is the best, this is the proposal we thought we'd bring, is figuring out, well, how much of that should be allocated to the electric rate payers? And when you hear when it says the municipal rate, the charge, discharge of the city is also increasing, really that's our way of kind of distributing that cost across the entire city. And then specifically, you heard Cindy's contribution directly from her enterprise that comes from, that's matched up with revenues that are generated from the Mesa Art Center. So that's, and we could move those dollars around, but that's, we kind of saw those as the three different stakeholders, partners, beneficiaries, maybe a better word, say, of this project, either from a locally sourced sustainable energy or from a physical structure that provided a new venue, shaded parking, that we saw that many could benefit from. So that's, that's how we got to where we are today.
Chris, are we risking getting into a net metering-type discussion or issue like EPS did with solar panels where, where you have the non-solar panel users subsidizing the solar panel users?
Uh, no, no, sir.
So this will be fed directly into the grid, no net metering, so all customers are affected equally with this arrangement.
Mr. Freeman.
Thanks, Scott, for doing this, and I appreciate this. I have a couple of questions. I know renewable energies are something that we need to be in our portfolio because we've had that discussion before, and I do know it costs more to deliver that service. One of the things I, I've thought about in some of our past conversations, and I've expressed that I consider this as a part of our enterprise, enterprises that we own, and I don't understand why we don't want to own it and then sell the electricity because there is value in that. I mean, if we're talking about this funding, I understand that these companies want to come out, take a piece of our ground, put up the structures, and this structure's gonna be similar to what Empire has, apparently on Country Club, it'll be very similar to that, which is a beautiful structure, and I wholly endorse the structure, the concept, everything, the parking, the covering, but I would like us to treat it no differently than any of our other enterprise sources, and again, own it. If they want to lease some of that, that's fine. I know that initial concerns was we don't have the employees to service the solar panels and things like that. To me, that's a minor problem. I mean, you can always employ a third-party contract, which we do across the city all the time, to take care of these services, but I'm, I'm more in line to, again, own it than have a company build the whole thing, sell the power to us versus personally, and just, I like to own it. That's the bottom line.
So, Mayor and Council, and that was, we went through that several times. The purchase cost, what was that, one point?
It was about $1.6 million was what, and that, that would be minus any bond issuance cost and some other costs that might come with it.
So the $1.6 million was what the upfront cost for us to have this built, and that was kind of trying to figure out where would the capital cost come from that? So what, but that, on the other side of that, in addition to if we came up with a capital cost, which is possible, our experience has been with these other models that we're using in the SRP service area is, is defer, or transferring the risk of performance of this facility to a third party has worked out well for us because their focus in making sure the maintenance and the technology and making sure the panels are working to their highest potential, their motivation of profit and being able to generate maximum energy seems to have worked out well for us. It is not a core competency that we currently have. It would be added to many other things we do. I'm sure we could do okay with that, but it would be a competency we do not have today. And just the idea that we could pay for this cost over a longer period of time and have a third party who would be fully responsible for the performance of the output of the energy seemed very attractive to us versus the risk that we would take if we owned it that if it wasn't performing, then not only did we put up a lot of money, we've never, we would be short in ever getting the return to pay it back. So I think it just came down, we do a lot of so many different things as a city local government, and I think we do them well. This is just one of those areas that I guess we just were not real comfortable that it was an expertise, and we had this discussion over and over again. I'm not saying we couldn't do it. One is coming up with $1.6 million, two, it's just that the next 20, 25 years of making sure this performs year after year, month after month, and performing that persuade, and we're with you, we like to kind of control things, but the idea that somebody else is motivated to make sure this performs and the output of energy is on, if it doesn't perform, they don't get paid, and that kind of motivation is stronger on the private sector side, frankly, than it is on the local government side. So that's kind of where we are, but we can look at it. Our, but our recommendation is this model is a model we've, we've been using, and we've seen really good performance, and we've had good performance from the vendors that we are currently utilizing at the locations that Scott has mentioned.
I just follow, I'll follow back with a question. Chris, I, I have solar on my home, and there's, to me, zero maintenance. I mean, I have, the only, only time I'm not producing power is on cloudy days. So really, the solar people will tell you there's almost zero maintenance, and the output is there, we have some of the most sunniest days, but not to belabor that, but I, I just feel like personally, as to our constituents, it's just another part of our portfolio in our enterprise system, and it's an easy to do, and again, you know, we may not have the expertise, but there's plenty of solar guys out there who'd love to maintain that and see, we can do, we do it with our generators, we do it with our clothing, we do it with many different aspects of our, our city, where we can get a third-party contract, we can build a structure, own it, maybe reduce some of our costs. I know the payback is much longer, but then I guess the thing sticks with me, if after 25 years we can buy it back, that's a long time. So I just, I just think that if we just buy it, put it up, have a third-party contract, and I know Scott and I've talked about that several months ago, but, as well as Frank, but I'm a proponent of, and I'm, I'm gonna stop now, but owning it.
And I, and I guess I'm a little bit on the opposite side. I don't want to own this, because I think the, the return on investment, the reason that the 25-year buyback is because your return on investment's either 25 years or probably never on solar, and then we have to go out to the voters and ask them to do a secondary property tax increase to fund a $1.6 million project, that really your return on investment isn't, isn't anywhere within the decade that we're, that we live in, is, I guess is one of my concerns. And there is maintenance to solar. I mean, you still have to have somebody clean the panels and keep those clean and so that they operate fully.
Mr. Luna.
I agree, Mr. Thompson. I don't think we should own it. I think having this contract is gonna be worthwhile doing, and I would pursue doing that. I take advantage at the Multi-Generation Center, having the panels there, and I know that, that model has worked, and as well as going to the Red Mountain Library, that's worked. The other thing I wanted to say is that the Mesa Art Center is, is a jewel in our community. Having this there is going to attract more people to want to put booths during MacFest, Dia de los Martes, any of those activities. So I really believe we're gonna generate a lot of income to pay that $12, was it $12,000, and I think we're, this is a wise decision, and I think this is a wise move, and certainly would pursue this and encourage you to move forward on it.
Okay. So, Chris, we wouldn't have any monies in our enterprise fund that we hold over to pay for this build.
Oh, I'm not, no, it's, listen, it's a matter of priorities, right? If the council told us, and I'm willing to, maybe we could go back and do two analysis and take this, these numbers and then set it side by side with what, what happened if we were to purchase it. It just, it became this idea that we could, in my mind, shift the risk and the performance, the idea of maximum performance to a third party to do this, and maybe I'm overthinking the complexity of this, but the idea that it would be performance-based, that was very attractive to me, and shifting that risk to a third party was very attractive, and then it also allowed us not to have to take significant dollars out of a capital budget that we have today, that we, somebody else, we're shifting that cost to them and then paying it over a long period of time, but that's just how we looked at it, and that doesn't say we couldn't do it. But that's just how we looked at it, and that doesn't say we couldn't do it the other way, but that's where we, that's how we came up with this recommendation.
I agree with Mark. I own two solar panel systems, and the systems are extremely modular. There's really only two parts to them, solar panels and inverters. And you can even switch to a micro-inverter that allows you to monitor it every single second to see how much output's being produced by the system, so.
From your phone, too?
Yeah, from your phone, from whatever device it may be. So I think we're completely overcomplicating how solar panel structures work. From my perspective, I own two of them, and the ROI is a six-year return on investment. It was when they had the American Recovery Reinvestment Act as part of the federal program. I don't know what we qualify as a municipality, but it's a relatively low return on investment from my perspective. The questions that I have, though, are what, what's the cost per kilowatt hour that we're agreeing to purchase the electricity from, for this project?
We'd be looking at 14 and a half cents per kilowatt hour.
And what is it today that we, what's the cost per kilowatt hour that we purchase from our other sources of energy?
Our marginal purchase power cost is about 2.9 cents. That's melded all our resources.
So we're almost paying like 400% more per kilowatt hour with this project?
Yes. Now, if we were to source solar from some solar farm in the desert, we're seeing prices come back for that around six to eight cents per kilowatt hour. As a way of comparison, ASU structures, their PPAs, we estimate around 20 cents per kilowatt hour. So this is, as far as we've seen, much less expensive than ASU's projects. So because this is a, you know, renewable, local project, there's an additional cost to that that we're trying to figure out how to intelligently best distribute.
And, and Tony, if we, if we compared this to then rooftop solar, if you're looking at the local generated within the electric utility, I think that's the one to look at is the rooftop solar where you're providing that metering, because that's really the only energy that's being produced within the electric service area like this would be. That, that is.
That's, that's nine cents per kilowatt hour.
About nine cents.
Now, when we purchase peak energy supplies, that can range up to seven cents per kilowatt hour, or in times if there's transmission troubles, 20 cents. So our cost of energy really varies depending on what we're buying, when we're buying it, and what the conditions are on the system, so.
So 2.9 was aggregated solar and non-solar?
That's aggregated solar, non-solar, at night when nobody's using electricity, during the day, during peak times, so that's, that's everything compiled together. So it's not a good comparison for what this project will be producing because of the additional benefits of it.
So the rooftop that we purchase, I'm assuming that's, so the citizens install rooftop solar, and we purchase from them at nine cents per kilowatt hour?
Correct.
Okay. So we would still, so essentially, we could transfer the entire burden of risk to the homeowners and still be paying less per kilowatt hour than if we were to build the project ourselves?
There's, there's additional risk with the rooftop solar, too, because we've had a few customers who have either passed away unfortunately or moved away, and were left with panels that we paid them an incentive for, that we can't collect our incentive that we paid them. So there's risk to rooftop solar that's much greater than this project. This project is assured, so hail damage, wind damage, vandalism, car accidents, anything like that, Amaresco would be on the hook to repair that immediately or not be paid, so.
How, what's, what was the total capital cost to build this entire project?
1.65 million. Plus, sorry, plus, if we were to buy it outright, there'd be cost for issuing bonds, and the interconnection costs, and a few other things. So it comes out to, I think, around 1.8 million total.
Plus the 300-something thousand for the amenities.
Plus, yes.
Yeah, but that's, that happens.
That's going to be there regardless, right?
Right, that's correct, just for the full picture.
So if you took the 1.8 million, how many, what's the year, like, what's the ROI if you assume that you were going to save 14 cents per kilowatt hour based on how much you anticipated the system was going to make? How many years would it take for it to pay off the 1.8 million dollars?
When, when we ran it out, we did kind of look at an ownership scenario, and when we were running out, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, and we put a net present value both on the, the payments for the 25 years and versus that upfront capital cost, really, it came out within about $80,000 when you looked at it holistically over that period of time.
And that's, that's what, that, when we ran that analysis is when I said, well, then the risk is that somebody else has to perform, and they are on the hook for the performance.
What's the $80,000 a year?
That's just the difference. When you run the, when you run the stream of cash flow out of one versus the other, because we still have a payment on the 1.8 million dollars versus this, this payment that we're looking at now was netted out at over the total cash stream of about eight, net present value of about $80,000, I think. Is that correct? Yeah. So it, to me, it was a wash. At some point, it almost became a wash between the two, other than the fact that somebody else was performing. We'll be glad to come back. We could show what a purchase acquisition looks like. And again, it just, I think from a capital cost side, whether we're paying it out over a stream of, of contributions that you see here, or an upfront cost, that we still would have to make a payment somewhere. There's a cost of capital, opportunity cost of capital. It really didn't, it really came down to the guarantee of performance. That's really what it came down to. The capital kind of washed itself out between the different approaches of whether we capital, funded it with capital, or whether we, it's funded through the Amaresco's contract, really it came down to, will we be able to realize the actual performance of the parasol?
Yeah. And I will say, in my experience with these over, so since, since the Recovery Act in 2009, we've been doing these projects, we did purchase some solar that is out at the Red Mountain Softball Baseball Complex by the Brown Road Water Treatment Plant with our funds. And we've had some maintenance issues associated with those. Unfortunately, the manufacturer who, who we purchased those from went out of business, so we have difficulty getting parts at this point for some of those, for some of that solar equipment that is out there. With our SolarCity contracts, we also, I'll be honest, have had issues mostly with the inverters. We do have some that have your regular inverters, and then the latest installations, we do have the microinverters with them. Typically, we will get an email from SolarCity, who is our solar vendor for that, and they will, they are monitoring it very closely because they are paid per kilowatt hour. So typically, we'll get an email from them that says, we see that an inverter went down, there's a string of panels that aren't producing, we need, we want to be out there in the morning, can you get us access to the site? And that's all we'll have to do. We're either coordinating with, you know, the library, the police department, the parks department to get them access. They go in, they've got all of the pieces that they need, they'll switch it out, and typically, it's done in, within a couple of days. And I'll be honest, most of the time, they are the ones that are notifying us that those things have gone down. And, and it really is because they have that financial incentive that they're only going to be paid for the kilowatt hours that are produced from the system. So I'd be glad to come back, and we can talk about the advantages and disadvantages of ownership and what we've seen over the past. We did try and look at it in, in detail, in looking at what the financials and what would make the most sense. This is the proposal that we have, but of course, we can come back and, and give you more options.
I'm sorry to be the one talking so much with Jeremy, but Jeremy reminded me that my return, I'll have my structure paid off in six and a half years or less, and I'm on a, my guys say that I'll probably have it paid off sooner than that. So I find that to an advantage. I produce 9,000 kilowatts just in what I have. The maintenance is very minimal. The other thing, you talked about interconnect costs. What would that internet, interconnect cost be?
We estimated that at $35,000. That was worked into all the numbers that we, that we ran and compared and showed to Chris, so.
I guess what I'd like to see is a cost analysis, again, on both sides, spreadsheet on, on how it's all put together. I think that's where Mr. Brady's leaning towards, because I'm a proponent of owning it, putting it as part of our enterprise system. Solar technology is improving every year. I mean, the, the panels are getting cheaper to buy, the inverters as well, the ability to see what's going on is getting, well, much easier to see. They even have Wi-Fi in them, obviously, probably, I know mine does. So that's what I'd like to see, maybe a cost.
And we can do that. Remember, when you're talking about putting a panel on a rooftop, you already have the structure that's holding that up. We're having to build everything from the ground up, so that our capital cost is going to be different than somebody who's already installing on an existing structure. But we will, we'll come back, we'll have, we'll do the analysis that we've done with what it, what it looks like if we purchase it at our current capital cost versus the proposal that's here. Where essentially, we're purchasing, the, the capital cost is being recovered through the rate that's been imposed to do that. So we can do that. Mayor, we can come back and, and present that to the council and have that discussion.
I know this is agendized for, for action item, but I think that I, I'm kind of seeing a split on the council that we'd have some additional questions. And, and I have, I appreciate the, the great amount of analysis that's already got into this, and I, I agree that it seems like it does financially come out to a, a coin toss, but it seems like what we don't know is what, as Scott was talking about, the ones we already own out by the, the Brown Road, Red Mountain complex, technology changes so frequently. 25 years does seem like an extraordinarily long amount of time when you're dealing with such a fast-changing technology, and I don't know if, if shifting the, the burden or the risk on the effects of that changing technology is, is good or bad, because it seems like as technology improves, we're going to get more electricity from better equipment, it's going to become cheaper. So I, I don't know if I, do I want to have the, so that means these, these, I would assume, 10, 15 years from now, these panels are going to be producing, the new panels that will replace these panels will be producing more electricity. So does that mean we have an additional, we're locked in to buying more electricity at an artificially high price? Does it, or does it mean that had we owned the equipment ourselves, we would now be producing more electricity? And is the cost, electricity is a commodity, right? And as more and more green electricity comes online, is the price of electricity going to go down, or is it going to go up? And so there's just, for that reason, there's a lot of variables here as technology changes, you know, over the next few years, let alone over the next 25 years. So to me, I'm not sure if that means that's a good reason to shift the burden of what the financial impact of all that, those changes are going to be to somebody else, or if we ought to anticipate that, that it's going to break in our favor and the math will get better for us.
Yeah. And if Amaresco was, would want to change out panels, that would require a contract amendment to the current contract that we have. Basically, kind of the concept would be like a floor and ceiling, so there's, there's a performance guarantee of a minimum number of kilowatt hours that they're saying that the system will produce, that it needs to produce on an annual basis. And then also, we're looking at a ceiling that says, if you overproduce by a certain amount, there would be a discounted rate on what we would pay per kilowatt hour for those. Typically, what you'll see with solar panels is that they will degrade over time. It's usually about a half a percent is what you'll see per year that it'll degrade as far as their production. So if you did see that there was, if there was a new technology that came out that could be switched out easily with these panels that would produce more energy at a lower cost, we would have to do some sort of contract amendment with Amaresco to then say, okay, if you're going to produce more, what is that cost going to be? And so it would require an amendment. But otherwise, really, we're, we're looking at how much it would produce. It's, it's, they're, they're pretty stable as long as they're operating, and it's, it's of course weather-dependent, but we have pretty stable weather within Arizona also. It's, it's, you know, you can always be guaranteed it's going to be sunny eventually. It's, it doesn't stay cloudy here long. So from that standpoint, it's, it's a pretty secure energy supply from what we've seen over the years, over the last, you know, six, eight years that we've been doing these types of contracts.
Well, I think the consensus here, unless somebody wants to make a motion, which is great, please do, but I think the consensus is we'd like to, I know you've done a ton of analysis, but I think we'd like you to do maybe a few pounds more of analysis. And my particular question is, what is the anticipated effect of changing technology? Because I can't imagine that 25 years from now, we're going to have the same panels up there, just with the way, you know, this is such a fast-changing, fast-evolving industry. And so I, like I said, maybe that's a good reason to do this and to shift the burden of that to somebody else, or maybe it means we're foolish to lock in 25 years of what we know is going to be outdated technology a couple of years from now.
I don't think we've ever seen energy deflation, though, right? Historically, have we ever, have we ever seen energy prices go down? So I mean, as long as the ROI makes sense from today's perspective, I don't know how we can't use that metric to determine that it's going to make sense for the next 25 years. And to the point of the panels, don't most of the panels come with 25-year warranties, performance, warranties, guarantees?
I think I've seen, I don't know, about 25, but I think 10 is the minimum, definitely. I think it goes as high as 25, yeah. I think that's definitely reasonable.
I just want to say to your point, I mean, if the ROI makes sense today, I, it's not my opinion that.
It's only going to get better.
Energy costs are going to go down in 25 years.
We typically see somewhere around a 3% escalation is what we put conservatively on, on prices going up over, over time.
So I guess from my point of view, yes, to the project. It's a great idea. Love to do it. I think we're, we're just debating the details now. Do we make, or how do we account for the risk going forward? Is it better for us?
If the council's comfortable, and that's, I mean, it's kind of a policy direction, too. If you want us to get into it, that, we just haven't gone into it that kind of a commitment in the past. We've done these third parties, but if this is the opportunity, council says, well, maybe this is the one we want to kind of look at, this model of ownership, we'll look at it and bring, let us bring that analysis back.
Mr. Glover.
I had the ability to discuss this with Scott earlier, and so he answered some of my questions in an email. When you're doing this analysis, can you focus on projects like the ASU one and see how much they've had? I know their upfront cost is about $11 million to do that project. Do they own it?
No, they, they, I believe most, if not all, of ASU's solar projects are done through this PPA-type model.
That's who we actually kind of talked to.
Right, right. That's what, originally, back in 2009, when we started doing these projects, ASU was the first one who had kind of dipped their toe into this water and had started doing these projects. And they're really the ones that introduced us to this model, and through work with the Sustainable Cities Network, we were able to gain a lot of knowledge in regards to how these, these contracts work.
And in the analysis, will you include what engineering has estimated what this would cost the city if we were to own it?
Yeah, so if it was a strict engineering project where we went through the design, bid, build scenario, it was estimated to be about $4 million. Now, the reason this, this is a unique structure, and also, Amaresco is partnering with a group. The reason, I think, for some of this difference is, Amaresco's partnering with a group called Power Parasol. Power Parasol has a patent on this type of solar installation. I actually read the patents, first time I've ever read a patent before. And what it is, is they have a patent that it, because this structure covers not only the parking spaces and the drive aisles, but then also, it was interesting in reading it, because it gives shade that mimics the shade of a tree, because if you look at, in this picture here, you can see there's, there's spacing in between the panels, whereas with your normal carport structures, it is all covered. There's no, you know, it, even with like the Multi Generation, Red Mountain Library, it's also convenient because when it rains, the rain doesn't go through there because it's completely covered. This mimics the, you know, shade that you would get from a tree, and it does allow vegetation to grow underneath it. And so there's actually a patent for this type of design. So that's where it gets a little more complicated, because if you want to do this type of design, really, you do have to partner with Power Parasol, and that's what Amaresco was able to do.
We'll come back.
Great. The other, the only other thing I'd like to see from analysis is like, what if, if we're going to spend the money and we're paying 400% more for electricity, then I'd also like to see analysis of what would it look like if we subsidized residential so that we gave the option to pass the capital expenditure cost off onto the residents of Mesa, some sort of incentive, right, to put the panels on their house? It seems like we're combining two issues into one. One is providing renewable energy, and the other is providing a structure, and we're sort of looking at, at it all as one huge cost. If we can separate the two issues, that we can analyze the electric side of it, I would really prefer that. And to the point that if we could pass off the capital cost to the residential users to put it on their house, I think is another alternative path that we should look at.
So are you asking if the electric utility had some form of incentive for solar installations on residents?
Right, just like SRP does.
Okay, and we currently do. Tony can tell you, we do currently have a program like that.
We do that.
Right, so. So I mean, if we took the amount of cost that we're applying towards this project and spread that as some sort of incentive back into the electric grid to solve the problem of creating renewable energy, right? Because that's one issue that we're talking about.
Well, we're doing both, I guess, is what we're saying. We're not, it's not one or the other. We would, we're, there's dollars available for residential rooftops today.
Right. But the additional cost burden that we're inheriting with this project, if we were to put those capital, if we're going to take the cost of that and shift that back over to the electric side as more incentives, what does that look like?
Okay.
If the goal is simply to produce more renewable energy, right, as a means of value?
Locally sourced, yeah.
Yeah.
I think one of the things you have to remember, too, is our electric grid, our electric grid that we own is only about five, five and a half square miles. So you'd have a huge burden that you'd be putting back onto the ratepayers on the electric side.
A burden for what?
If, if, if that's what, are you asking like, how do you subsidize or take the money from this and subsidize, spread that cost out across the?
No, I'm suggesting to incentivize the homeowners in our electric grid to simply install their own solar panel systems. If the goal is to create more local renewable energy, how much is this project costing us as to if we took those funds and shoved them back into incentives for the homeowners to just simply put up their own rooftops?
And we could do that. And I think that just, but that goes back to this idea that to manage that, if we were to take the equivalency of rooftops versus this, what we were saying is, we already have a program for the residential rooftops, and that would continue, but we don't see those as, as parallel, because this has, it's a consolidated initiative. It makes the efficiency of the maintenance and the oversight much simpler, and then it provides a significant amenity above and beyond just generation of power. And we, we had, we didn't look at this as just being, producing locally sourced power, it's looking at it as an amenity that's beneficial to city, a city venue.
From a shade perspective, and so that the art center?
Shade venue, I'll do that, yeah.
Right. And all I'm saying is like, can we just separate the two variables so that we can see what the cost is for the amenity specifically and the electric? As opposed to combining them into one, it's extremely difficult to analyze like from an ROI perspective, what are we truly getting out of it? Like, I understand if we need to give a shade structure.
Right. It's just, the difficulty is trying to, and that's what we did here, is to associate the value of the shade structure versus the locally sourced energy. And so that's why only, the portion that we identified that's going directly to the electric users in this area, that's how we, that's how we distributed that, that cost. So the, the number you see, that's, the $64,000 is the part that is directly related to the energy being produced and the cost that'll go to the ratepayers in the, in our, in the Mesa Electric Utility.
Yeah. I'm just saying to give the burden to the homeowner, like, I know on my solar panel system, I watch it because the second that I stop producing electricity at the rate that I'm supposed to, I'm paying for that out of my pocket because it then comes from the grid. So as opposed to, if, if the goal is not for us to take the burden of responsibility to maintain the system, and if we give more incentives to people in our electric grid to create their own solar panel systems, they're going to watch, they're going to clean the panels, they're going to make sure that they're producing, because if you're not, your electric bill goes through the roof. One of my panels broke, and, you know, I immediately noticed because my electric bill cost.
And we don't disagree. I think that, that if we go back to Tony's story, where we can't always have control over those panels, or there's change in ownership, or something else happens, we don't have as same kind of control over a rooftop installation than we do with a city facility. That's, that's, at the end of the day, yeah, so they're not getting the benefit, but they may not be in the home anymore, and we've not, the incentive we've provided, we can't, we can't claw back the upfront cost we gave to them, or the upfront incentive we gave for them to do the installation. That's the difficulty for us.
Yeah. I would say SRP does it, right? They incentivize 30% on their panels, so somehow they came up with some type of formula to make sure that they're not, the panels aren't leaving, and that people aren't taking off the system.
Sure. So SRP and APS and TEP actually stopped their incentive programs a little while back, but we're still continuing ours because we're kind of playing catch-up with them. Just to kind of speak to your point a little bit and throw some numbers out, our customers who have solar on their roof are averaging maybe 1,500 to 1,600 kilowatt hours per year out of every kilowatt they install. This project is somewhere up in the 1,900 to 2,000 kilowatt, because when customers put it on their roof, their roofs aren't always tilted optimally. A lot of times, they have trees in the way. There's no guarantee that they'll maintain those trees. And like we said, you know, some installations have gone in saying they're going to be this big, and we go back and visit the installation, turns out it's smaller, and some of our customers have moved on. So we're not seeing the kind of reliability out of our rooftop program that we think that this sort of project can get. So when we're comparing that 14 and a half cents, or if we divide it into like the, the funding we're proposing and go with 7.25 cents, compared to nine cents with rooftop solar, for that seven and a quarter cent, we're getting more reliable power with somebody who's on the hook to make sure it produces, and it produces more energy, so about 25% more energy per kilowatt versus our customer-owned solar with a little bit more expensive and no guarantee. And we're, we're seeing actual real-world performance drop because of those issues I mentioned. So there are challenges with both. But we can bring that, that comparison to you in a more comprehensive fashion, definitely.
Okay. Thank you. Obviously, we'll have more discussion, but hopefully, from my perspective, I love the shade structure at the, at the MAC, and I, I think we're all intrigued by the idea of how to best go forward on the, the solar portion of this. So thank you very much. Any additional questions? All right. Next item on our agenda, item two, acknowledge receipt of minutes of various boards and committees. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you. And a second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is information pertaining to current job order contracting projects. Council, any questions regarding any of those items? Hearing none, the next item on our agenda is to convene an executive session to discuss and consider the District III Council member selection process and applications. We do have two blue cards to speak on the next agenda item, which is when we reconvene after the executive session. It's going to be awkward to hear from those individuals at that time, because I can't tell you if we're going to be in the executive session for an hour, or for five minutes, or for two hours. So we're going to invite these two folks to come forward now, because, so that you don't have to wait around and find out when we come out of the executive session. So first, we'll hear from Gary Severs, Mr. Severs.
Microphone?
Yes, please, I'm sorry, please have a seat in front of either microphone there.
And I have a face made for radio, so they see my back, right?
That's, well, I can't help you with that, but we're looking forward to hearing from you for-
Neither could my parents.
For three minutes. Welcome.
Okay. Now, I have four radio shows, so three minutes, two minutes, one minute, 30 seconds, slash the throat means cut.
I'll give you one of these, okay?
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Okay. Is my time started? How much time do I have left?
It just started. You're at 2 minutes and 58 seconds now.
Okay. I'll go fast. Four radio shows, and you know that I got to get it done in three minutes. Winston Churchill once said, "I have the ability to cram the largest amount of words into the smallest amount of thought." That's why they put me on the radio. Is the microphone on? Let's see, I, I'm here because you need to associate a name with a face, and so, because all this thing for District III has come up so, so quickly. So my name is Gary Severs, and I'm running for the rest of the 15-month term for District III. And I'm running on this platform of the old and ugly party. Now, how old am I? I can tell you exactly how old I am. My wife was trying to make me feel good, and she said, "You're not old, you're on the back end of middle age." And I said, "That's true. If the average person lives to be 135 years old, then I'm on the back end of middle age." So if you do the math, you can figure out how old I am. Okay. I, I know, before we get to the big finish, folk, the volunteer, you want to know about volunteerism. I've done four one-man shows, and the one that is the biggest seller is Give 'Em Hell Harry. So at Mesa Community College twice, Chandler Gilbert Community College twice, Scottsdale once in Paradise Valley, I did what was the equivalent of $15,000 to $20,000 worth of free shows for the MACV Veterans Organization. They took all the money, and they were, the money was donated, and I took nothing as a salary, because my youngest son was going to the Navy, and I figured, you know, put your money where your mouth is. If you don't volunteer for this, it's not, it's not right. So the other things as far as volunteer is concerned, Rhodes Junior High, how much time do I have left?
One minute.
One, oh, goodness. Rhodes Junior High volunteered football, basketball, baseball, track, and wrestling as an announcer. Got John Avianatos, who spoke six times at the Rose Bowl, as a free speaker for their banquet. Dobson Men's and Women's Basketball, JV Football. MCC, I was paid $15 or something for that. Let me get to the other volunteer stuff, I'm running out of time. Central Christian Church, I was an elder for four years, and I got, on Sunday nights, we volunteered at Pos de Cristo, campaigned chair for the New Life Center, and did that for three years. We paid it off and burned the mortgage after three years. What else did I volunteer for? I'm trying to get to the, to the good part. I'll never have time to do the big finish, folk.
Gary, you got about 10 seconds.
Oh, goodness, okay. Fundraiser for first responders after 9/11, November 11, 01, raised money for first responders, director, actor, speaker, featuring Marshall Trimble, Arnett Ward, boys doing Who's on First, my two sons, who did it at Bank One Ballpark's opening day. I did Will Rogers and introduced John J. Rhodes, who talked, and that's how I first met Dennis Kavanaugh, because he was there, I'd gone to his pancake breakfast, and if John Rhodes, who was kind of infirmed, he cut, just, I got to finish the sentence. If he didn't show up and give the speech at the end, which he did, and then Dennis Kavanaugh was going to volunteer. And I don't get to the big finish, but that's okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate you being here. Next blue card we have is from George Tahania. George, I'm sorry, I just butchered your last name.
I'll explain that.
Okay.
You gave me my perfect opening, and I'd like to say good morning to the council, and thank you for the few moments I have to talk to you about this. When I first started teaching in Mesa at Westwood in 1967, my students had just the same difficulty in pronouncing my name. So I told them, "Well, you can call me Mr. T." And then when the other Mr. T came along, I had to say that I am the original Mr. T, but since I teach, I don't have the money to buy all the gold that he wears. So with that, I'll get started. I do live on Dobson Ranch. I have lived there for 28 years. I'm very proud of Dobson Ranch, and I understand that there have been another speaker here who has spoken about Dobson Ranch itself. I would like to say that my impression of Dobson Ranch is that we have some very qualified people living there, top-notch people, and I would respectfully request the council to keep that in mind as well when they vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, George. Those are all the blue cards we have. That's why I would now entertain a motion to convene an executive session. Thank you, Mr. Luna. Thank you, Mr. Glover. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We will convene an executive session. I do have, there was a consensus reached in executive session as to five individuals that we would like to invite to our council meeting next Thursday for the next phase of the selection process. And those individuals, in no particular order, are Christian Stump, Francisco Haredia, Frank Meisner, Pablo Felix, and Teresa Ratty. So those five individuals will be contacted by city management with the details of what to expect next Thursday. It was a, a great pool. I, I think it's a great indication of a healthy city when we have over 30 applications submitted for the opportunity to serve on our city council, so we're very grateful to those individuals who took the risk, you know, and exposed themselves to ridicule and, and criticism by, by getting involved in the process. So thank you very much to everyone who, 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 this was a very difficult process to whittle it down. I'd just like to express my appreciation to my fellow council members. There was a tremendous amount of work that went into making this election. It was obvious to me that everyone had read every application and had put a lot of time and effort into this process. So I'd just like to express my thanks to everyone for doing that.
Mayor, if we could just get a motion, a second, and a motion to bring those five people back to-
Okay. Thank you. Motion and a second to proceed with those five names. All in favor, please say aye.